Okay. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with the NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Didich.
Yes.
Councilman Di Piero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stanzial.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
We have our board planner, Ms. Winters, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Dangley.
Okay, this is a meeting for township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board. Today is August 7th, 2023. The time is 7:30 PM. Would everybody please rise for a Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This is a public meeting. With that said, are there any members of the general public who would like to make any comments or presentations that are not on the agenda for this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda. Item on the agenda, application number 23:520, Federal Realty, 1123 Route 46. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Good evening. Luke Ponte here at the Law Department. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant. Have you seen him?
Yes.
The applicant is the owner of property, as just recited, of 1123 Route 46, and that is block 729, lot 7 on this township's accident. The property is located in the B1 district, and we're here this evening seeking minor site plan approval, along with the bulk variance related to parking. The property that I'm sure you all know well is approximately 19 acres in size and is referred to as the Troy Hills Shopping Center. It has major tenants, including Michael's, Petco, and Target. The applicant proposes to lease an approximately 6,760 square foot portion of the shopping center that used to house the Dollar Tree to a new tenant, Phoenix Salon. There are no exterior improvements proposed as part of this application, but due to the change in tenancy to a salon, the applicant seeks a variance to permit the 1,025 existing parking spaces where a minimum of 1,370 parking spaces are required per your ordinance. In support of the requested relief, we did submit a parking evaluation prepared by the command associate dated June 9th of this year, which confirms that there remains sufficient parking throughout the shopping center to house this additional use, and testimony will be provided further and in support of that. We did receive two reviews from your board professionals, one from your engineer that was dated July 13th, and one from your planner that was dated July 21st. We have four witnesses with us this evening, a tenant representative, an applicant representative, our traffic engineer, and a professional planner. We published notice in the Daily News on July 27th and mailed it to property owners within 200 feet of the subject property on that same date, and an affidavit of service and mailing was provided to the board during this night. As part of the board planners' review, there were some completeness items. Would the board like to address those before proceeding?
That would be our normal process. Planner, would you mind?
Sure. Yeah, there are a number of waivers related to the fact that there are no external changes proposed. These include the location of existing easements and right-of-ways, contours, proposed spot elevations, floor plans for the existing and proposed buildings, existing proposed utility services, storm drainage design and improvements, site illumination, landscaping, an environmental assessment report, existing easements, contours, proposed signs, fences, and utility services. And we don't have any objections to those waivers.
Okay. Do any members of the board have questions or comments about the waivers being requested? Seeing none, make a motion to approve.
Second, Matt.
All right.
You're asleep, Dominic.
Okay. And with that said, Nora, please call the roll.
Didich.
Yes.
Di Piero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Here.
Matt.
Yes.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Stanzial.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes. Okay, waivers are approved. Please continue.
Thanks so much. And just to confirm, there were a couple items that were not necessarily noted as waivers, but that your planner requested be addressed as part of the resolution compliance, so should we be fortunate to get approval, we would be happy to refer to those items. And with that, we will call our first witness, Matt Haley, who's representative of the applicant.
Good evening, everyone.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record. It could be a business address.
Matthew Haley, H-A-L-E-Y. Address is 50 East Windwood Road, Windwood, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
And just to confirm, Mr. Haley will be a participant.
Okay.
Mr. Haley, can you please confirm your role with the applicant?
Senior project manager, tenant services.
Great. And so as part of that, you oversee tenant relationships at a variety of shopping centers that are owned and operated by the applicant?
Yes.
And are there other shopping centers operated by the applicant that include a Phoenix Salon or a comparable salon suite operator?
Yes. Phoenix is a quality operator, adds value for any shopping center. We're excited to have them join us here at Troy Hills.
Great, thank you. And based on their tenancy at other locations, would you anticipate any issues with parking?
We do not anticipate any parking issues. You'll hear from our traffic engineer, there's plenty of access parking in existing lots and be able to handle Phoenix's parking dynamics.
And there haven't been any issues at your other sites that house a Phoenix Salon?
No, we haven't had any issues at other sites.
Thank you. And there was a question that came up in the board engineers' review about waste removal. Can you please provide operationally how that happens at the shopping center?
Yes. Each tenant will clean out its own space, collect its own waste. Tenants then bring their waste to a common dumpster on site, which is then collected by the hall. This is the same for all tenants. No changes are anticipated due to Phoenix's tenancy.
Thank you. And to go to one comment that came up in the board planners' review, there is a discrepancy between the number of parking spaces that have been approved under the last application and the number of spaces that are existing today. Are you able to clarify that discrepancy?
Yes. A prior approval for Target in the shopping center included a park and variance to allow 1,038 parking spaces. On site today, there are 1,025 parking spaces, which has been confirmed both by our survey and our traffic engineer. The tenant Target handled the application, and we believe an error likely occurred in their surveying process to count the car corrals as parking spaces, which is incorrect. The correct number of parking spaces is 1,025, and we propose on maintaining this number as part of the application.
Thanks, Matt. I don't have any further questions for him on direct. I hope you've got the board. Do you have any questions?
Question?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Stanzial.
Any concerns of that whole strip mall area becoming defunct and then like a bailout or leaving? Like, what's the problem? Are you signing a lengthy lease as the organization? I know that. I'm just looking at what's been in there and what's moving out of there.
Correct.
Right? So it's tight, and you've got some major tenants moving out and some tenants moving in. So are there concerns of that not being a relevant property in the future?
No, there's no concerns. Right now, Phoenix Salon is the one tenant filling the vacancy. We look ahead for future vacancies tonight.
You have Home Goods leaving.
Not that I'm aware of.
Home Goods may be at this shopping center across the street.
Sorry.
We have Eastporta leaving.
Eastporta is a tenant of this site, yeah.
Yeah.
But there's no concerns at the applicant level of, you know, changing this from being a shopping center use, correct?
No.
Go ahead, Mr. Matt.
You mentioned you have Phoenix salons at some of your other properties. How many suites do they have?
Anywhere from 20 to 30. Larger suites above 8,000, have as many as 40.
Okay, so you actually have some that are as big as this one is proposed?
And bigger, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we do have a representative from the tenant that can answer questions somewhere goes as well.
Any questions from our professionals?
Not now.
Nope.
Okay. Any questions from the public? All right, seeing none, all our questions are done.
Great, thank you. Our next witness will be Andrea Covelli, who's a representative of the applicant, I mean, of the tenant, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. If you could please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It can be a business address. Andrea Covelli, C-O-V-E-L-L-I. And I'll give you my home address. It's 710 St. Avenue in West Paulville, Jersey, 07006.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Covelli, can you please describe your role with Phoenix Salons and your relationship to the application tonight?
Of course. Well, I am the owner and operator of the Phoenix Salon franchise proposed for this location. I am a franchisee who will provide luxury salon suites to individuals with proven clientele who are seeking entrepreneurship. I will have about 39 suites in this location with 39 entrepreneurs who intend to operate successful businesses.
Thank you. And can you please describe for this board Phoenix's business model and how Phoenix intends to operate at the site? Before you do, we are going to introduce an exhibit, and this, I believe, will be marked as A1. I have copies of an 11 by 17 version for everybody.
Need anything else?
It looks like they have a... A larger version is up there.
And so it's just one sheet?
Yes, just one sheet, and it's comparable Phoenix Salon locations.
Okay. And the presentation that you have on the side here is the same that you're handing out to the board at this time?
That's correct.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Andrea. So could you please provide a description of the business model and how Phoenix intends to operate?
So there are 39 entrepreneurs that each rent out one of the 39 suites within the space. The entrepreneurs are able to select their own services for their business, but the services include hair care, beauty coloring, styling, grooming, nail care, manicures, pedicures, skincare, body care, relaxing, massage, tanning. And it's, so you know, it's an appointment-only type of business, and we do not accept any walk-ins.
So while the board has the exhibit in front of them, so you just described that there are 39 separate suites within the tenant's space. So the picture on the bottom left of the exhibit board, would that be, can you describe what that is for the board?
The all suites are coming out?
Yes.
So that's a typical-looking hallway, and on each side of the hallway are the separate businesses, and it kind of will go in, picture like a oval, and a lot of suites on each side. So everybody has their own business, their own names, everybody runs it how they want. It's very individualized.
And then the photo D, which is on the bottom right of the exhibit, is that an example of what one of the 39 suites would look like?
And it's at their discretion, and they get the luxury suite that I provide, with certain, you know, certain furniture and things like that, that they can decorate however they want and personalize it to their needs.
Can we ask some questions now?
We'd like her to finish her testimony.
Sure.
And Ms. Covelli, could you please describe why you selected this location as a good site?
So Troy Hills Shopping Center is the perfect location for the Phoenix Salon suites. It's close to all the major highways, and the plaza has easy access from all directions. Parsippany has a great customer base for Phoenix, and we think residents here will enjoy the services being provided.
Thanks. And what are the average hours of operation for the site?
The general hours of operation are 10 to 5, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m., which is typical for a Phoenix Salon suite. However, each business owner is able to schedule specific appointments to suit their client's needs, and it could be, you know, after regular hours. And then as far as the suites, although there are 39 suites, it's highly unlikely, I just wanted to point that out, that every single suite would be open and operating at the exact same time. And of course, it would depend on the time of day or the day of the week, but I think it would be fair to say that the 39 suites, max 20 to 30, would be open at the same time, but you won't ever get all, every single one, open.
Thanks. And how many employees generally are anticipated?
So assuming with 100% of the suites rented, there would be about 40 employees.
And so that would be one per suite, and then maybe a receptionist or somebody at the front?
Yes.
Thank you. And in terms of signage, did you intend to have any signage?
Yes. We intend to have a wall sign that will replace the Dollar Tree signage, and it will be in line with Phoenix Salon branding and will comply with all township codes.
And so while it's not proposed as part of tonight's application, a question had come up in the board review memo, so we wanted to address that. And photo A and photo B show what the branding signage would look like, correct? So it would be, you know, those words and in that font, but perhaps to replace the Dollar Tree signage that existed?
Yes, it would be, as you said, to replace the signage and for Phoenix's branding.
Great, thank you. I don't have any more questions on direct. Be happy to answer any of the board.
Okay. Mr. Stanzial?
Sure. So I guess, I'm sorry, I was looking at, because Google Maps has some weird funky thing. It said that you were going to be over there by, or right over here. But so in the same lot, you're going to be there with sport clips, correct?
Correct.
And then have you traveled up and down Beverwick Road?
Yes, a very familiar place.
There's probably, what, eight or nine, 10 lots of salons?
In the whole town.
Yep.
Tons of salons.
Tons, crazy. You can go get a haircut, you can get ice cream, haircut, Indian food, haircut, ice cream, haircut, Indian food. So what is your intention with all of those businesses? Because they're all renters, by the way, on our, I guess you'd call that main town Parsippany, right?
Right. So it wouldn't directly affect a salon owner. I used to be a salon owner myself. It might be if the salon has, say, 10 people working for them, but one of those people want to leave and do their own thing, gives them the opportunity to leave. They have their clientele, which they probably had built for five to 10 years, if not more, and they can go and have their own little private suite, just them and their clients.
Understood. Do you see that the, have you looked at what the detriment could be to the town, like to close down that? There's a lot, by the way, we probably should have less.
Mr. Stanzial, I'm going to slow you down a little bit. This isn't an application that regards the zoning or this is an approved use.
I know, explaining.
So, yeah. Because normally I'd be with you on those types of questions.
It's permitted use.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be a pull and play, is what it's going to do.
Is there anything else, Mr. Stanzial? Just wanted to give you an opportunity.
No, that's it.
Okay. Any other members of the board?
I have a couple.
Yeah, Ms. Veely, you had a question. I'll let her get in.
I was just curious, in other towns, this is kind of unique to Parsippany. I'm the zoning officer, so it's unique to us, it's something new. So I'm just curious, in the other towns, because the tenants, normally you get a zoning permit for each tenant name, so we're going to be giving you a tenant name for that specific tenant, but we want to make sure that each of the suites are permitted uses also, because Parsippany has a very unique permitted uses, and our personal service establishments are unique. Is that, do you in other towns talk to the town each time the suites change, or do you generally not do that? Is it, are they all going to be hair salons, nail salons, and tanning, or are there different uses?
Most of them, 90%, 80% to 90% would be hair salons.
Okay. Speak into the mic, please.
So about 80 to 90% would be hair salon in general, that's the bulk of the business, and then the rest would be in the health and beauty industry.
Because there's definitely a new use called a med spa that has become very popular in Parsippany, and the way that the zoning department is reading is that a med spa has a medical component to it, so I would say that none of those suites could be that sort of med spa. So it's just something to think about going forward, that we make sure that each of those suites meet Parsippany's very unique, very strict zoning guidelines. Because a beauty salon, hair salon is perfect, but as soon as you start to trigger any of those other personal service establishments, there should be dialogue with us. Because I'm just worried, this is unique, this is the first time we're having this in Parsippany. So we want to keep that dialogue with the township as those suites might change and other uses might want to go into there.
Okay.
Question, Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Stanzial.
Not sure if this is in the parameters, just asking a question. Are they all licensing to you so that you know that everyone, are they licensed to you, and then they're subcontracted by you, and you're paying them? Like, how does that work?
I'm basically a, I guess, sub landlord, so I...
So you're renting like a spot?
I'm renting my personality, and then my space, and then I'm providing space, and they're paying me.
But are you checking licenses and stuff like that?
The State Board of Cosmetology will handle that. Everybody has to be licensed.
Okay. On that note, I have a question. Could you explain how the proposed use is different from a booth or chair rental, which is prohibited in New Jersey?
To my knowledge, I think it's actually not anymore. They just passed a new law in the State Board of Cosmetology. However, it's different because it's, you're not renting a chair. It's not for my business, they're having their own particular business, just they only have one chair.
And will you be operating as a gallery shop? Will you get a gallery shop license?
I believe that's the license that I will have to apply for.
And will each of the individual business owners obtain a mini-suite shop license from the Board of Cosmetology?
Correct.
Okay. And would you agree that separate COs would be issued for each suite owner so the town can confirm that the uses are compliant?
I'm not really sure.
They're not COs. Construction doesn't issue specific COs for tenant uses, they only do for renovations. So I'm the director of construction, so also, so we issued tenant permits, zoning tenant permits. But we would be issuing for the full space, not for the separate suites, because the zoning ordinance doesn't ask for that, that's why I want that dialogue.
But to my knowledge, I know that we would have everything in place for the zoning per each suite.
Okay. Construction's going to issue a CA for the space for any renovations that it has, not a CO for the space. It's a little bit different.
Okay, so you would, would you agree that each of the tenants would comply with the township's definition of cosmetology use and not be a med spa use or any other use that's not permitted in this zone?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll have to be a permitted use within all of the substations.
Those are all the questions.
Okay. Any other questions from our board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, so when the Dollar Tree leaves, how long does it take for your, all these suites to be set up? Is there a timeframe usually, how long it takes?
It's a long project. Dollar Tree did leave already.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yes.
Yeah.
From when I actually get my space after landlord does their work, it's without delays, six-month build-out.
Okay. Thanks.
Do you own more than one of these?
No, this is my first, but I'm hoping to own more after this one.
And is there any intention on, you know, recruitment processes? I'm sorry, I'm probably sliding off the line.
No.
I'll give you a little room there.
I mean, I'll answer that, fine. I'm not allowed to go to places and recruit people, especially within the same plaza.
Can we possibly add some kind of condition that you come and at least apply for the tenants, the different ones? No fee involved, because when we issued the permit for you, that's the fee, but for the others, to just to make sure that we don't have to have somebody that moves in that they tell you. I spoke to zoning, and zoning said it was fine, and then we find out that they're more along the medical realm, and that way we prevent any, you know, you don't want to have to rent to somebody who moves in that then later find out they didn't talk to zoning, and then you have to try to evict them from the space. Maybe there's some, something. Is that possible, to do something like that?
That was a question for us.
Okay. So for, just for clarification, as, when Phoenix moves in as the general tenant, they apply for a tenant permit with the town, but then would Phoenix be willing to, for each of the sub lessees that you're going to have in each suite, just submit a form to the town saying, this is what, this is the tenant in Suite A, and they're going to be doing X, Y, Z?
To my knowledge, I don't think they have had to do that in the past in other towns.
So would you be willing to do that in this?
I guess, yes. I have to speak with Phoenix and see what they, you know, it's a franchise, so they have also their steps along the way and how they run things, so I'm sure it wouldn't be a problem.
And we can certainly agree to a condition that all of the sub leased spaces will be for permitted uses.
Okay.
You know, happy to coordinate with the zoning officer and make sure, you know, some compliance check to make sure that that's, you know, that it is all permitted uses on an ongoing basis. I mean, we could agree to some, you know, making an effort or approaching the franchisor to see, you know, what's permitted at that level, understanding that it's a franchise, and she can agree to that tonight.
Okay.
Okay. And Jen, on that note, I, it's probably something where we might want to make a recommendation to the council that ordinance covering this type of business would be beneficial.
There's definitely an argument with zoning officers in other municipalities about prohibiting this type of use, because you can't control the other little tenants that move in unless they change the ordinance and make everyone apply. And I don't want you to have to charge a new, somebody new, and I understand the whole concept, I don't want to have to charge them $75 zoning permit, I don't want anyone to not want to try that use. I'm just worried that you would rent to somebody who you thought was a permitted use, like I said, and we more felt that they were more along the lines of the med spa use, because we've denied like five med spas in the last three months. So it's a very popular use. So they're all going to gravitate to you immediately as soon as they understand your opening, so I just, I just don't want you to have any difficulties going in and thinking that those are permitted, because they're very popular right now. But there's a medical component to them that they're being reviewed, so I just, you know, just want to cover it. If you were not applying to the board now and you were just applying to zoning, I'd probably be asking you to submit a tenant permit for every one of them. But since we're having this dialogue and I can have it here, we can make it a little bit easier.
So do you think that down the road, something like that's going to, is it that the towns don't know how to handle the situation?
It's new.
Right.
It's just new, and once you're in and we're comfortable...
Because I agree, right, there probably will be some that will come to me, because it's a nice, small space, so they can do that kind of thing.
Yeah, and we'll have dialogue about those tenants as they go on, just to make sure, you can always call me and say, this is, and I like a letter of intent from someone that explains. The nail and hair salons, you have absolutely no worry about, it's that middle ground. I don't even know if they could do that in this type of suite, because it's so new to me, I'm not really sure, you know, but...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just step over the line?
Yes, Mr. Stanzial.
Can I step over the line one more second?
I didn't mean to put such a restriction on you.
No, I know, I know, but you know what? I am a small business guy, I appreciate small businesses. I know that we have an incredible amount of barber shops in this town, but there's a lot of employees there. There's a lot of people that have actually invested money in actually renovating their places. There's new places that have opened up over the past few years, and, you know, the last thing I'd like to see is, you know, a lot of their businesses be dissolved. But I also do know, in the same token, is that a lot of these guys are there and they're like the best guy in the place, like, is there going to be a real like vetting process? Hey, let's talk to people in town, let me figure out? Because the last thing I'd want to see is something like, you guys come in and then all of a sudden like we have eight empty vacant buildings on Beverwick Road.
I don't personally think it's going to all be people who work in Precipony. If you, if I lived two towns over and have a clientele that I've had for 10 years, or even three towns over, and I saw this opportunity, my clients would still follow me.
Why'd you pick Precipony?
Well, I grew up in Motville and I've always been in Precipony too, and my dad, a lot of, many, many years ago owned a gas station in Lake Hiawatha, and I've always been part of Precipony, and I think it's a great place.
I mean, him and I, he's got great hair, I've got okay hair, right? So it's just, you know, it's looking at clientele.
Back in the day, I worked in Troy Hills Plaza when Hair &amp; Beyond was there, when I was 17. I think it was called Hair &amp; Beyond, I don't know, but I've always been in Precipony.
We want to keep businesses strong in the town and make sure that they're strong.
I understand that, I don't see it hurting anybody, to be honest with you, it wouldn't wipe out an entire salon.
Yeah.
Maybe one person would go from this salon, another one from another, you know, it happens.
No, I understand, it's business.
In this business, they move around a lot anyway.
100%. Good.
All right. Any other questions from our board?
Just got like a housekeeping question on the, when you identify the businesses, each suite, how will they be identified, like when they advertise?
It would be Phoenix Salon, maybe, you know, Andrea's Salon at Phoenix Salon Suites, that kind of, but every door in the, like, in that hallway, every door to the business will have their own unique name, business name. They run it exactly like a business, their own business, they're just going to pay me rent.
So it would kind of be like when you have an office building with multiple tenants?
Yes, exactly.
Except instead of office work, it's personal service salon type?
Any profit margins above and beyond, or it's just a flat fee?
For Precipony, it depends on the size of things.
Your normal space, is there, you're going to pay me this much money and then if you're...
Yeah, like weekly, the weekly rate. I don't have the numbers yet.
Okay. And the equipment that's going to be in this space, will there be plumbing, will there be, I assume, electricity? Could you just go through the list of the?
I mean, each suite will have its own plumbing and electric.
Okay. Okay. I'm not seeing any other questions, so I will conclude that and hand it back to your attorney.
Thank you. Our next witness will be Sandy Coza, traffic engineer. And as she's getting situated, I will pass out the next exhibit package.
And so will you be marking this one also?
Yes.
Okay.
There's going to be a few throughout her testimony, but we will mark this as, this is going to be the first one. Yes, so this is your, so we'll mark this as A2. And A2 is, I believe, a blown up portion of one of the charts that were in the parking evaluation.
Thank you, yes.
I have another non-parking question.
Go ahead, Mr. Stansiel.
I know where you are now, exactly, but I'm just saying, and you're the owner of the property?
He's not on the mic, so you're...
I know, so if you want to come on the mic, I have a question for you.
Okay.
Sport Clips, are they done?
Sport Clips is in and operating.
End of oper-
They were open today when I stopped by the property earlier.
They're end of operating?
No, they were operating, operating tenant, yes.
Okay. There's no, anything in your lease that you would not put a competitive entity or anything like that in?
No, not at all.
Okay. All right. Good luck to them. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so if you would please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide the board with some background on your experience and licensing.
All right, my name is Sandy Coza, K-O-Z-A. I'm with McMahon Associates of Omen Company. Our address is 425 Conference Drive, Port Washington, PA. I've been a traffic engineer with the same company for the past 23 years. I have a civil engineering degree, a bachelor's and a master of science from Penn State University. I'm also a licensed professional engineer since 2008 in the states of PA, New Jersey, Maryland, and Ohio. And I do a lot of private development, traffic impact studies, parking studies, that type of thing, and we also do school-wide traffic studies and reviews for other townships in Zipp, PA.
And your licenses remain in good standing?
Yes, they are.
Do any members of the board have any questions about this witness? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and approve this witness.
Thank you.
Ms. Coza, has your office been engaged by the Alpinist Project Traffic Engineer for the site?
Yes, we have.
And you prepared the parking evaluation report that was submitted?
Yes, we did.
Great, so can you please take the board through your, the existing conditions of the property and then your findings?
Okay, so what we have on the screen over there, rather, on the board, that's the existing conditions of the site. So that's an overview of where we are, we're to the south of US 46, north of I-80, and then we're to the west of South Beverwick Road, which is County Road 637. So we have a right-in, right-out access on US 46, as well as another right-in access on there, and then we have a right-in, right-out access on South Beverwick and a full movement access on South Beverwick. So what we did was we went out to the site out here, and we verified how the parking conditions were under current conditions. We had a copy of the ALTA survey, and we were verifying what they had on there in terms of the actual parking spaces out there. So we had staff that went out and they counted all the spaces out there to verify what was the car corrals and things like that. So that we have our existing parking count is 1,025 spaces. That includes 10 spaces that are reserved for patron pickup that are in front of some of the other businesses, like some of the smaller restaurants, and that also includes 23 ADA spaces out there. What it doesn't include is the car corrals, and we counted eight of them when we were out there. So those are not included in that 1,025 number for the existing parking spaces. And we usually don't count those, because obviously a car can't get in them if they're being used by the car corral.
Yes. Yeah, and while you're discussing the existing conditions, could you please just describe for the board the existing non-conformities that are on the site?
All right, so there are five existing non-conformities, and basically there's going to be no changes to any of those. So the first one is related to the rear yard setback. There's a requirement to have 50 feet, and basically what's out here on the site right now is a 43-foot setback. The impervious coverage, it's a requirement to have 80% max, that's also staying the same at 86.9%. The maximum building coverage was required to be 20% max permitted, and what's out there right now is 23.3%, again, no change with that. And then the minimum landscape green area, and this is mainly along US 46, 25 feet was required, and basically there's 7.3 feet out there. The last one had to do with the minimum building gross floor area, that a minimum size of 10,000 square feet was required, and basically there's a minimum out there of 2,885 square feet, which is lower than that minimum 10,000 square. There's no changes in any of the buildings and the parking lot layout as part of this project. So all those existing conditions and existing non-conformities are remaining on site here.
And this application does not exacerbate any of those existing conditions, correct?
No, it does not.
And can you please review the existing parking supply and then what it would look like should the application be approved, right?
So the existing parking supplies for 1,025 spaces, and if approved, that number is going to remain. What we're asking for is relief from the required 1370, and that number is basically a result of the township's requirement that for every salon suite, there be three spaces. So then the salon itself is required to have 117 spaces. So when we added that to the previous requirement, with the Dollar Tree took off their spaces, which was 1,287, and then we took off their 34 spaces, added the 117, we're coming up with that 1370. So we're basically looking for relief of about 345 spaces then, because that's the difference between the 1370 and the 1,025. So in support of that parking relief, what we did was we had staff going out there on three different days. They went out there on Thursday, May 4th, May 5th, and then Saturday, April 29th. They were out there from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and what they were doing was they were walking around the entire parking lot. And I'm going to switch to one of the figures that's in the report. Can we just get more of the A3 then?
Yes, so this is A3, also in the packet. What color would you have for this?
And what this shows is, when we go out here, because this is such a large shopping center, we subdivide the parking lot into various zones, then we can get an idea of where the parking demand is, where the parking supply is, and this also enables us to look at specifically the areas that are adjacent to the Dollar Tree, to make sure that there's sufficient parking in those areas for when it switches over to the Phoenix Salon. So this is one of the figures from the report, and basically, when we're looking at this, the overall parking, what we did was we looked at the peak parking demand on all three of those days. The maximum parking demand was on Saturday and was for 435 spaces. So we are well below the 50% mark in terms of occupancy and use of the parking. So there is sufficient parking out here, we add in the 117 spaces, we'd be taking this up to 500 and some spaces, I'll have to get that number.
552.
Yes, 552 is what I have on my sheet here.
Sorry, can I interrupt? Say it one more time. So you're saying on a Saturday at peak time, the most cars in their report, 35 cars at one time?
Yes, that's what we observed.
And that was Saturday, what was the date again?
April 29th.
Okay. Thanks, sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. One of the other things that we also have in the back of the report, we do have time of day charts for that, that go through each one of those days and show how the parking varied in each one of the zones. So if you wanted to look at one of those zones specifically, you could do that. So what we did was we looked at that in terms of what was out there. So our next thought was to look at the future parking demand out there, so what we did was we overlaid that 117 parking spaces onto each one of those hours, knowing that it was a conservative estimate, and that if we could fit that 117 on here, within the entire parking lot and specifically within Zones 6 and 7, we can have space for what's required per zoning for that area for the parking. So that's one of the things that we have, within Zones 6 and 7, we had a peak of 111 spaces under existing conditions, and when you add the 117 spaces to Zone 6 and 7 alone, we end up with 228 spaces, and that was on a Saturday. And those two areas have a parking supply of 242 spaces, so there is sufficient parking in there if all those people were to park at the same time in that, those two zones for the salon. So we looked at that. We don't think that that's realistic in terms of how the salon is actually going to operate in terms of the entrepreneurial part of the business, not all the salon suites being open at the same time. So one of the things that we did was we went out and did some observations at Cinnamons and Shopping Center where they have Phoenix Salon. And that salon has 44 suites, and when we were out there, they only had, 18 suites were operational out of that number. So not all of them operate at the same time, and that's part of the, each of the businesses setting their own hours, and whenever they have an appointment, they would obviously be there, but if they didn't have an appointment, they wouldn't be there. So that's part of what we looked at. So when we looked at their peak occupancy for their 18 suites, they had a peak parking demand of 34 spaces. So then when you take that 34 divided by 18 and then multiply it by the 39 up here, you're looking at about 67 parking spaces max, if we were to equate that same number to this facility here, which is well below the 117. But we still looked at the 117 in terms of tenant fit in those separate zones. One of the things that we have in the back of the report, and I'm going to pull up the one that has the most parking demand. This is probably going to be A4 then, this is chart E in the report. But basically what we did, this is the time of day variation for those two Zones 6 and 7, so the two blue numbers are the existing parking demand within Zones 6 and 7. And then what we did is we looked at what the parking demand pattern was at that Cinnamons and Store, and we overlaid that based on what we were seeing out there. And then we also then took this box here, and this box here, if you have the green and the yellow, those add up to 117. So when we looked at the peak here, that occurred from 3 to 4 on Saturday, and we still had 14 spaces in those two zones for the parking, so that we could meet the requirement of like the nuts out.
So just to reiterate, that even if all 117 spaces were acquired and used at one time, which based on your testimony and Miss Kelly's testimony before you, is a highly unlikely scenario, even if that were the case, there's sufficient parking both just in Zone 6 and 7 and also in the lot as a whole to accommodate all 117 cars?
Yes, there is.
And that's at any peak hour during the days of the week?
Yes.
I have no further questions on correct, but happy to answer any more.
Any questions from board? Mr. Matt?
Sure, I have about one question with about probably nine parts, so, just kidding. So first of all, so you counted 435 and 412 on a Friday, correct?
That was the maximum on Friday, between the hours of 9 and 7.
And there's about 200,000 odd square feet in the shopping plaza, right? So that's running at about 2 per thousand?
Yes.
How does that compare, did you compare that to the ITE Parking Generation Manual or?
Yes, most places that have parking requirements for shopping centers, they typically require a parking supply of about four, and then your parking demand is much lower than that.
I'm pretty sure ours is at least six.
Yes.
I mean, and that was, my next question was, you didn't do these counts in December, which is usually a higher parking demand, correct?
No, but even if we were to increase the parking out here overall in the shopping center, there's still going to be plenty of parking out here for everything.
Okay. I am curious about, you counted at Cinnamons, and you said that it's in a shopping center?
Yes.
All right, how did you isolate the parking for it?
This is where it gets fun, because again, it's in the shopping center. We had someone sitting in one of the spaces closest to the doors, and they actually counted the number of patrons going in and out, but we just assumed, even if there were two patrons going in together, each one of them came in their own car.
Okay, so this is really customers?
Yes.
Extrapolated cars?
Yes.
And I just kind of glancing, I got an advanced copy of the report, just so if everyone's curious how I know this stuff.
Just so you know, I like these types of questions, I like them.
You two all have a good time talking.
No, but I noticed you have a whole bunch of samples of how many suites were used at a given time. And the maximum I saw was 27 of the 44. Is that, like in, because you had a whole bunch of different dates, and number of suites that were occupied at the same time, or at one time, out of the 44?
They had told us that when we asked for the occupancy there, they had told us there was 18 suites that were occupied at Cinnamons, and that's what I was told.
Wasn't, didn't you have the table, like, in your appendix E that has a whole bunch of samples and averages 18?
Yes, it's all for Cinnamons.
Hold on.
B3.
E3, yeah.
B3.
E3, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so this is what, they actually pulled a bunch of different dates here. So these were not the dates that we did our counts on. So what they did was they pulled data all the way back from September 2022 through October 2022. And they looked at the occupancy of those suites on those particular days just so that we could have an idea of what the occupancy was as well. So even, like if you look at the first one, on Friday, September 9th, they had 44 suites there. But in the middle of the afternoon, only 21 were occupied. And then if you go down further, Monday, October 3rd, obviously Monday's not a good day for them, there was only three out of the 44 occupied. So this is the data that Phoenix was able to supply us in terms of the actual occupancy patterns that they had in the area.
Right, I was just noting that the highest I see on this list is 27 of the 44, 61% occupancy.
Yes.
So, and the average was 41%. All right.
Yes, for the suite occupancy, yes.
No, well, thank you for doing such a great job. This is pretty, you know, it gives us a good understanding of what this use is likely to really generate.
Any other questions for the traffic witness?
Yes.
Mr. Nepal, Tom? Thank you. And this is A3, the one that's color coded and says Zone 10, Zone 11, that one there. There are seven spaces in Zone 10 behind the green part of the building. Are those assigned to that business? How's that work? Or that's just anybody? The one, I guess.
Okay, so you're on figure three in the report. Zone, the one that has the overall?
Yes, figure three, correct. Are those seven spots assigned to that particular business? It's anybody?
I do not think those spots in the back are assigned to any specific business.
All right, that just means there's seven spots there?
Yes.
All right, so as Mr. Matt was saying though, about the number of units being occupied at one time. So let's just say out of the 39, 30 get occupied, right? I mean, 30 are working. Then there's 30 clients. So that's 60, and then 30 people are waiting for the next. At one point, there could be 90 cars just for that one business. Probably not going to happen though, right?
No.
The way you're going to stagger the.
A lot of the, it's probably different for you to get your haircut for a.
Oh, it's very easy. My arms on, you know, minute. Some could take an hour.
I'm usually there at least two hours. Color highlights everything.
Three hours?
Yeah, it's an order four the other day.
That scenario would never happen.
Right, so that's why you're probably not going to get 30 people waiting.
Gotcha.
The other thing is when they're scheduling these, because these are private appointments, they're going to schedule them so that they have some time in between appointments to clean up their suite. So you know, there's no hair clippings or anything like that on the floor. They would do something like that, and they might even put themselves a short break to cut snack or something.
Perfect, thank you. And thanks for the report.
Any other questions? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Dadij?
Quick question, right? So based on what I'm looking at these charts, so there is a higher concentration of parking need in Zones 6 and 7 when Phoenix comes in. Right? So would we not, would we also need additional or a little higher number of the reserved parking for the handicap parkings?
Were the shoes, I think they're meeting their ADA requirements overall.
Is the question, will this specific tenant have reserved ADA spaces?
Right, see, I'm thinking it this way, right? Let's say for the entire shopping center, there's X number of parking spots required as per the ADA code. But there is a higher concentration of parking in the Zones 6 and 7, right? So there must be a higher number of ADA parkings within those two zones, just to accommodate that additional need, right?
So there are, I think there are 23 spaces, 23 total ADA spaces on site?
Yep, but we don't want somebody parking, one of the Phoenix customers parking far at the end of, near, upon their end, come back, right, walking, right?
Ideally, they would be parking close by. I guess I'm not following what the question is.
There are 39 tenants now, right, within that small area? So concentration of parking requirement is higher there in Zone 6 and 7. So if there are already three ADA parking spots, I think it's low, low considering that.
Well, they, yeah, I mean, they meet their ADA requirements site wide. And just as there may be some for this tenant, there may be some for a tenant that's closer to Zone 1 or 2. So that's why the ADA spaces are located where they are currently.
Right, and I believe there are five out in that area.
So while they're checking, a question for our professionals. Do we know how much parking was required for the outgoing tenant? Do we know that instead of 117, was it much lower?
It was lower, that's why they're here.
Right, so that's what my question is, right? If the Dollar Tree required, you know, let's say three ADA parking spots. Now they have higher need of regular parking. Wouldn't that require in the same ratio, right, ADA parking spots?
Andrew, the parking is.
No, the parking required for ADA would be overall for the shop.
That's where the problem is, right?
And I think I understand your question maybe. Is it appropriately located near this facility? Can you show where the ADA space, some ADA spaces are located?
This is going to be in here. This is one of the site plan.
This will be exhibit A5. I believe this is the second sheet of your package.
So here's the Dollar Tree. So these are four ADA spaces.
Could you bring the mic please? I'm sorry.
Just pull it off.
Yeah. No, it was more that, I was more worried about her record because she was talking more.
Nora said it's going to capture.
Okay, good, all right.
And there's two more spaces off to the other side as well. So there are about six ADA spaces in the general vicinity of where their entrance would be. But it's shared with all the other uses, which is typical.
Right, so my question is, when Dollar Tree was there, we needed six ADA parking spots, right?
It's not calculated on a tenant by tenant basis. So every time a tenant comes in, they don't reevaluate what the ADA requirements are. It's only when there's new parking spaces going in, if they hit a certain level that would trigger the need for a new ADA space, they would install one at that time. But there's not a reevaluation done every time there's a tenant.
Yeah, no, so I understand the guidance there, right? Overall parking spots, right? But now with the Phoenix coming in, there is a higher concentration, 117 parking spots will be used in Zones 6 and 7. So wouldn't ADA go up in same ratio, right? Dollar Tree was not, there are more customers coming in. That's what, that's where I'm going. Which means some customer will park further away and come back walking.
So do you think that the number of ADA stalls in the area is sufficient for the proposed use?
Yes, I do.
And the number that I heard was 23 ADA spots?
There's 23 overall in the center.
In the entire center? And based on the requirements, is that meeting the standard for 1025 or for 1370?
I believe it would be based on the parking spaces provided, not required.
Yeah, it's based on the actual number of parking spaces supplied, not the overall demand or ordinance requirement.
Okay, well, I won't pretend to be an expert on this. I'll instead defer to Mr. Dadij if he thinks.
Yeah, and I'll just add as well that the requirement is, not on the number of spaces that they have to be located reasonably accessible, reasonably close to the use. So there is a bank of several ADA spaces in Zone 7, is that correct?
Yes, there is.
So that's about as close, that's reasonably close to the use.
Yeah, I mean, but I feel like there's not sufficient in the Zones 6 and 7, based on the higher demand in Zones 6 and 7.
And that potentially a lot of people who need ADA spaces are visitors of Michael's and then potentially.
Michael's and Phoenix, right? So six may not be enough, right, based on the usage there?
We appreciate the comment. The applicant is not proposing changes to the distribution of ADA spaces as part of this application.
Okay.
Okay.
But you know, the applicant is always looking for ways to improve the site as a whole and site circulation. So you know, the representative of the applicants here tonight, I'm sure he heard you.
Yeah, I would recommend if we could add two more, right? I mean, again, it's more customer service, right? Again, it's more in Phoenix's favor, right? If there is more customer service, so yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? And just so I don't forget, any questions from the general public? All right, seeing none, I'll turn it back over to the attorney.
Thank you. Our last witness this evening will be our planner.
If you please raise your hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide lead the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and provide your last, spell your last name and provide your business address and then some background on your qualifications.
Sure, Matthew Flynn, F L Y N N. Business address is 101 Gibraltar Drive, Morris Plains, New Jersey. I'm employed by John McDonough Associates. I testified before dozens of boards like this across the state. My education comes from Rutgers. I have my master's degree in planning public policy as well as my professional planner's license in the state of New Jersey, as well as my national licensure, which is the AICT.
Senior License of勘察.
Yes.
Any questions from the board about the credentials of the witness? All right, witness is accepted as an expert in planning.
Thanks very much. Mr. Flynn, you've heard the testimony this evening. Have you been engaged by the applicant as the planner?
Yes.
And you've had a chance to review the application materials and you've heard all night's testimony?
I have.
Great, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, so as the board knows by now, we are requesting just one C variance, which is that parking variance with that 1,025 parking spaces that are proposed and existing versus the 1,370 parking spaces that's required. That's the only variance that we're seeking tonight. Like the applicant, like the applicant's team mentioned, we are keeping the existing buildings, the existing configuration of the property, including circulation, access, et cetera. All of that will remain exactly as it is today. So to get into that statutory criteria for relief for that one variance, I think it can be justified by the C2 balancing test or by the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweighing the detriments. First, the positives, we heard that this is a permitted use. All of the, all the tenants that are going to be located here will have permitted uses. I would say that this is continuing the positive transformation of this shopping center with another very high quality business, providing opportunities to entrepreneurs as well as options for residents and patrons of this type of establishment. I would say that giving residents choices for these types of uses does foster healthy competition. It fosters a dynamic of innovation where establishments continually strive to, I won't say one up, but offer distinct and better services than the rest. And I would say that it's definitely a good thing for the town. If somebody needs a haircut, they certainly know what town to look in. I would say that the grant of the variance would align with the principle of fostering diverse business opportunities while maintaining appropriate parking provisions. We heard from our traffic expert that there is adequate parking available on the property. I actually went out there earlier today and in the vicinity of the proposed establishment, I did see a large amount of unused parking spaces like the traffic expert testified to. So all of the above promote purposes of the municipal land use law, including purpose A, promotion of the general welfare, purpose G, variety of uses in appropriate locations, purpose M, efficient use of land, and purpose I, desirable visual environment. So the flip side to that is the negative criteria, no substantial detriment to the public or to the zone plan. Again, no site modifications whatsoever. We're just talking about this interior fit up of the existing tenant space there. I think the main question before the board, which has been addressed at this point, is whether this business is appropriate here considering the increase in parking demand. Again, we are looking at a property with a large amount of available parking. So I do think that this use is appropriate here. And I would say that the zoning ordinance requirement for parking, it does give two calculations. One for the gross floor area of the establishment. And the other is the number of barbers or stylists or what have you. And we have to go with the larger of the two, which in this case is number of barbers. As I said, this use is unique in the fact that we aren't looking at a fully staffed establishment like we usually see with barber shops. So I think the applicant has done its due diligence here by looking at other similar establishments, which is that other Phoenix Salon out in Cinnamon's. So all said, I think this is an appropriate project. And I think that all the appropriate questions have been addressed before the board this evening. And approval is warranted.
Thanks, man. I don't have any further questions.
All right, any questions from the board? Go ahead, Mr. Stansia.
All right, so you rattled off a lot. You know, great valid points. But the one thing that I see is, what is a detriment to the community? I mean, there's a neighbor right to this facility that's probably going to go belly up, right? Right in the same facility. Usually you see when you have, you know, little malls like that, that there's some non-compete type agreements. But then there's also, I'm going to throw a number off the top of my head, nine plus barber shops within Parsippany that are in nine plus different buildings all throughout the town, that I see this being a communal detriment. And whether you have one guy that leaves one place, because listen, a place that I go to, there's probably one guy that's really good, and he pulls the whole crowd. And then the other guys are okay. And he kind of helps augment because he's so busy. But if you pull that one guy out of each one of those places, there's going to be no barber shops in Parsippany. Maybe we have too many, we probably do. But you have a lot of businesses in the town that are going to go under, that people own those buildings and rent those buildings out. So unless there's some valid replacement process, you know? I mean, has your client looked at doing a job fair? Has, you know, is there processes in place to shore up the existing businesses that are in the community? Because I look at something like this as being a negative. It could be a positive, but part of me is saying that this could be a negative.
Thank you, appreciate the comments and question. Just to confirm, this is a permitted use in the zone?
Correct. Yeah, and I'm not aware of any ordinance that, or non-compete resolution that.
I didn't say that there was. I just said that usually.
I know, I understand.
When you see, like, you know, you own a strip mall, it's like, hey, you're not going to put a sub shop next to a sub shop or a pizzeria next to a pizzeria.
And understanding that the variance relief we're seeking is directly related to parking. Do you see after hearing the comments from Board Member Stansiali, any detriment to the application?
I do not.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board members? Any questions from our professionals? Any questions from the public? All right, seeing none, I think we've accomplished all of our questions of the planning witness.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
I just said we finished all of our questioning.
Great, thank you. We have no further witnesses this evening. I think you've heard that this is a tenant that's excited to be in Parsippany and operate. You've heard substantial testimony about how there is sufficient parking on-site to handle this new tenant and the increased code requirements for a beauty salon and the planning justifications for that variance relief. And with that, we would request respectfully that the board approve the application and variance relief.
Okay, thank you very much for your application. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the general public for any comments on the application.
What?
Love it.
Glad I didn't just run right through that. Please give your name and, I'm sorry, I'm taking your job.
Sorry, just state your name and provide your address for the record.
Frank Cahill, 90 East Holley Road, Parsippany. For this application, I hold a couple of different hats in Parsippany. One, I'm the executive, executive board member of the Parsippany Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm also chairman of Parsippany Economic Development. This is a very unique use. I happened to use one in another town, and I'm very happy with it. As for Sports Clips, that's like a walk-in business. It's not really where you go to have your hair groomed and styled. For the last three or four years, I've been going to another town, and so I'm glad it's coming to Parsippany. And I will say, this last time I got a haircut was from a place like Sports Clips, and they totally destroyed my hair because my person was away on vacation. So this is a very unique use, and I think it would be very good for Parsippany. I don't think it'll put any other salons out of business because each person's an individual, and they have their own business that they're running. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think his hair is great.
Okay. Any other comments from the general public? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Do any members of the board have any comments on this application? Mr. Napolitan?
I do. The business model, I like what I hear. I like that new businesses are coming to town. I do share some of Mr. Spanziale's concerns, but I think all the building we're doing in town, we're going to have an explosion in population, and there'll be plenty of clients. The traffic report with all the parking is outstanding, and I feel there's plenty of parking, and going to grant the variance needed, and I'm voting in favor of this.
Hopefully not with Mr. Napolitanos here.
I won't be a client.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Math.
I'd like to say, I'm very familiar with this site because until recently, I was going to the Esporta Gym every day. So I knew that was in there, which is now closing in but a week. This site is overparked. I have no problem with a parking variance for this site. I also do believe that this, you know, we should really look at our ordinance requirements for parking. It may create a better opportunity so we don't have to force people to come ask for variances for uses like this. But, yeah, no, I'm very comfortable with the parking, and I'm very intimately familiar with this property.
Yeah, I'd add on to that, I mean, with the advent of so much ordering online and just picking up at these businesses, the time in which a person is shopping at these locations and being present is less. Maybe parking can be revisited. But I just also want to add, what a wonderful presentation on transportation. I don't usually make comments about that, but, you know, we don't usually get as thorough of a presentation, and it's very much appreciated, so that makes it very easy for me to understand what's going on. Thank you. All right.
I just have a question for the owner, if I may.
Go ahead.
The property. I know for a few years we had, you had problems with the park-and-ride people. When that park-and-ride is full, they use spaces over in your property. Is that still going on, or is that believed?
Please come forward so you can use the mic.
It's not going to affect my vote, I'm just curious.
Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with the park-and-ride and the current procedure or what's new.
Well, it's right across the street.
I did notice when I made a left on the 46 to come here, the amount of people that I think got off a bus and then were crossing the street. I said, this is a busy road, everyone's just staggering the road. So I can take that concern back, and I can speak to property.
I, it was a problem a few years ago, and I think they had some cars towed away. I just wondered if it continued or if that's been resolved.
Mr. DePiero, I think adding the Water View site alleviated that. Plus, I think the park and, the New Jersey Transit was leasing space in Arlington Plaza. But they stopped that because the demand for parking is way down thanks to COVID, or the fact that nobody's working from home, or going home all the time now.
Their laptop business is now.
But we'll look into that, we appreciate the follow-up.
Any other comments from the board? All right, seeing none, are there any closing comments you'd like to make?
None other than we appreciate your time.
Okay.
Respect to your question positively.
All right, I'll accept the motion on this application then.
I'll make one.
Go ahead, Mr. Napolitan.
Motion to approve application number 23:520, Federal Realty, 1123 Route 46, Block 729 Lot 7, minor site plan with C variance for parking requirements.
Okay.
Any changes, additions?
I believe that the applicant agreed to comply with the recommendations in the planner's report, and will you also comply with any recommendations in the engineering report as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then the only other ones I had that the applicant agrees that the shop owners or suite owners will comply with the township's definition of cosmetology use and will coordinate with the zoning officer on an ongoing basis for when sub-tenants apply. And this most recent one, that the applicant will speak with property management to confirm if there's any issues regarding the park-and-ride. That was all I had.
No issues.
Okay. I'll accept a second on this.
Second one.
All right, Dadij, all right. Nora, please call the roll.
Dadij.
Yes.
Yes.
Math.
Yes. Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Spanziale.
Yes.
Really.
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much.
My wife made it.
Just give Mr. Cahill better hair.
Let's have Frank get back in town.
Motion to adjourn.
Would the members like a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All right, seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? You can stack.